What's your boat, doll?
We'll call this, uh...
No boat, doll.
We'll call this special work session to order. I want to thank everybody for coming out on this pretty Friday afternoon that usually when you're trying to get off early, you're coming down here and serving the city. We appreciate that. Call up to order and do roll call, please.
Mr. Powers.
Mr. Knight.
President.
Mr. Bennett.
President.
Mr. Cobb.
President.
Ms. Flory.
Minutes of our October 14th, 2013 meeting were sent out with the agenda. You have copies there. Do I have a motion from the council to approve, or are there corrections and additions?
All for motion. Let the motion be approved if there's no correction.
Is there a second to approval of the minutes for October 14th, 2013? Second, Mr. Bennett. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed likewise, motion carries. We don't have any old business that we're going to go into right at this time unless someone has something English to bring up. We'll cover the other topics, the new information that you have for us under other business. Uh, Mr. Bennett. So let's move on into the new business portion, discussion of proposed revisions to the zoning ordinance. And we have Sherri Proctor, the city planner, here to... Are you going to be the one to do this presenting? Lucius, are you want Sherri to present it, or you or Jack want to present it?
Either one. Sherri did that job.
Okay. Sherri, you better do it then.
Okay, well, I'll present it. And what I'll do is just briefly read through. The first one we're going to go over is for a buffer exception. This has been covered in several meetings and it's been topic of conversation for a few months now. And I'm going to begin with that one, reading with the staff report in the last planning commission packet. Over the past few months, we've had a couple of issues where hardship existed dealing with non-conforming developments and proposed developments in meeting a buffer requirement. This buffer requirement is a very stringent 30-feet buffer. And in a... It is a good ordinance as far as separating uses. And it would have been a great ordinance had it been adopted 40 years ago instead of in 2004. What we're faced with now are so many lots that are non-conforming lots in their very nature. They don't... They're not large enough to accommodate a good-sized building along with the parking, along with all of the buffers. And in the enforce... In the buffer exception ordinance, it states that the Board of Zoning Adjustment has the authority to grant an exception. This revision came about as a... An attempt to make a streamlined process. It is... The idea is why put an applicant through a six-week process and pay the $50 for something that you have staff that's competent enough to grant that exception? And mainly, the exception is the Board of Zoning Adjustment will grant a... Well, instead of having a 30-foot buffer, allow 15 feet minimum supplemented with a fence or wall. The idea was for staff, the zoning administrators, to be able to do that. It doesn't change the nature, it doesn't change the heart or the intent of the ordinance, it changes how it is processed. It doesn't take away an appeal process. And we went to the planning commission. Planning commission heard the request and recommended it to the city council.
What is the appeal process?
The appeal process is to file with the Board of Zoning Adjustment and the circuit court within 15 days of the zoning administrator's determination.
So the first process would go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment?
Correct.
Within 15 days of disagreeing?
They would file... They would file a request for an appeal and they would be put on the next agenda to be heard.
And then, let me just... And then they would go... If they disagreed with the Board of Zoning Adjustment, they could appeal after that to the circuit court.
That's correct. That's my understanding of the process.
Jason?
Uh, reading this and what you just said, it does not make you judge jury and execution.
Mm-hmm.
It just makes you judge and jury.
Oh, correct. I mean, maybe... Now, go ahead, Court.
Now, clarify that.
Yeah, the only thing that... I mean, here's what... I mean, here's the reality. I mean, I would think that it's pretty open and obvious whether or not the lot is non-conforming and if you can't have a 30-foot buffer, okay?
Let's stop... Let's make sure everyone's clear about non-conforming because that can be confusing. Non-conforming is a lot that, as you started to say, it could be a lot that's only 50 feet wide.
Right.
So if you put a... And you had to have a buffer, then you couldn't build on it.
Correct.
So then we're taking away the use of that lot. And there's some other factors that could come into play on non-conforming, maybe right-of-way for utilities or other items like that? Is that a...
Correct. There's a host of site characteristics that a development has to follow.
I mean, I know that whenever... Whenever this was discussed at the planning commission, you know, you've got several applicants that have come through recently. One was Henry Franklin and the other being like Dollar General. It was clear in those two instances, you can't have the 30-foot buffer on there. And then to require that they have to go to the planning commission so the planning commission can basically grant what is the obvious, meaning that they would be in a position where they would need a fence or some other type of vegetation versus the 30-foot buffer. And so the idea basically is it was explained to the planning commission was why not let the zoning administrator handle that so they don't have to go to the planning commi... I think to the BZA so that the BZA can grant what is, you know, an obvious request. I mean, basically, it's just a...
I mean, the BZA goes on staff's recommendation and they're... They've already reviewed the characteristics of the site.
Sure.
It's redundant.
Yeah, let me ask one other question after this. The... If you grant a modification for a non-conforming lot, can an adjoining property owner appeal or who else can appeal?
Anybody can appeal.
Anybody can appeal. So it doesn't take away the appeal process?
Correct.
For anyone, as if it weren't... The difference is, we've moved it up so a decision can be... If this is enacted, the decision could be made earlier and more timely in regard as what you're saying is an obvious situation and it's going to have to be addressed along those lines.
Right.
And the pros and... What are the advantages? And there's... Just throw this out to everybody. What are the advantages of being able to do that for someone who's going through the city approval process?
Well, the main advantage is the time constraint. I mean, if you come in at the end of a meeting or at a deadline for the following meeting and you have to wait... I mean, you're waiting six, seven weeks or something. And typically, when someone comes in, they don't even... They're not even aware that they're going to have to go through this process. They've already got the ball rolling, they're moving forward their project. I mean, the $50 fee is nominal, but, you know, it's becoming cliche, but we are trying to create or continue to create a business-friendly environment in tough economic conditions. So it's just one less thing that they would have to be... Would be required to meet.
Mayor, Lucius, you're on the planning commission.
Well, we... You know, we ran into this with Dollar General and they did hit in that timeframe and they were on a fairly tight time schedule. So they, you know, they were pretty upset about it. And like Sherri says, we want to be able to expedite these new opportunities when they come in without tying up for something that can... That's obviously going to be done in the process, but the process is just too long. So that'll expedite that.
Can you put a buffer on the city right-of-way to Alabama Public Company? Buffers on on their property?
Um, no. I mean, you know, the buffer, the 30-foot buffer would have to be not the right-of-way... I mean, you couldn't count the right-of-way, it'd have to go with the light lines, like wherever the light lines are, past the setbacks. Anyway, but in this sense, it was also an issue for Mr. Franklin because basically what ended up happening was there was a resolution reached with Mr. Franklin where he was granted the opportunity to do a fence with some vegetation surrounding that fence without having to go before the BZA again. And so this would basically set forth a process that he ultimately was allowed. And it would allow other people that same process where it's obvious that the 30-foot buffer you can't do. When you look at the property and you look at the application, that's obvious. But then they'd have to go through the BZA just to... So they could say, "Hey, you can do a wall or a fence rather than a 30-foot buffer." And this is just allowing Sherri the opportunity to do that versus having them to go back through another, you know, BZA process.
I do have a concern, being just a zoning administrator. In the future, opportunities for impropriety could come up. Whereas if you grant it to one person and you don't grant it to the next, there are going to be discussions that maybe things were underhanded and not done correctly. I would like to see maybe the mayor add it to this, zoning administrator and mayor as opposed to just one person.
Well, I can make a suggestion also that in other parts of the landscaping ordinance, the city tree commission looks at landscaping plans. Perhaps it could be one of those where it goes to the city's tree commission.
I'd like to sit the mayor involved, to be honest.
Yeah, I mean, I don't... I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with it.
Just don't use your influence.
The reality is, and anyone who's dealt with the Board of Zoning Adjustment and the planning commission going through these processes, if you're disapproved and you want... And you wanted approval, those issues come up. If you're an adjoining property owner or someone else and you didn't want it approved, those things come up. That's... That is just part of the nature of the process. So I think what this does is that if people do disagree, it just moves the whole... The whole actions in a more timely fashion as opposed to dragging it out over a long period of time.
And like I said, I don't... I mean, I'm okay with it, but it just needs to have one more person involved or it's going to have a look of improper... It could have a look of some improper...
Still have to check and balance, is what you're talking about, yeah.
The planning commission, did they look at that option of having another person sign off on it?
We never discussed it yet.
No. We did not discuss it.
It was recommended though with the unanimous consent with the planning commission, right?
Right.
So basically, what we could do before it comes to the council, if we make that change, does it have to go back before the planning commission? I think it does, does not?
Um, you know, to be honest, I'm not sure. So does it need to go?
I think if we make that change, we need to send it back to the planning commission to... Would you check on that for us?
I will. I'll check and see.
Regardless, we still have to have a public hearing.
Yes.
Because it's an ordinance change. So check on that aspect and if that's still an option, we... This is a work session, we can't take any action, but we can get... We can go forth and get more information and find out. And this is a good example of how... Why it takes time to get things done. Any other questions or comments? So let me be clear with the... See if I understand the... What I'm hearing from council members and the mayor is that we think this is a good process. We may want to tweak it some to add a second signature. And when we get that information, is there a consensus that we'd rather have the two Jason? No opinion?
When you said two, I'll say two.
Well, Jason's recommendation is that as opposed to just the city planner being able to make the non-conforming decision off of this, that it would have to be signed off by the mayor also.
Yeah.
So that's...
I would go along with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's the question we want to follow up on and we'll get that answer and then we'll go from there. Is that... Do you see any issues with that with the planning commission? I mean, y'all are in the same building, it should be... I guess the only problem would be is if the mayor's going on a fishing trip or something like that, it delays things and stuff like that, so.
He got emailed.
Right. So I'll find out before... I'll find out by Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, and then let y'all know Monday if it has to go back before the planning commission if they make a change.
Very good. Any other questions on this? Does that kind of answer some concerns you had? Mr. Harry?
I still have two.
You can bring it up. You can bring it up to me after the meeting.
They're not adjustable here.
Yeah. All right. Does that take care of everything here?
On that one?
On this one, okay. We have another zoning item to review?
Yes. This is the... This was a request on an applicant to revise... Is there any ordinance? To allow funeral homes as a...
Let me just... Everyone see where we are. This is January 21st, 2014, 4:30 planning commission meeting at the upper left-hand corner.
Correct. That's the correct one.
And so it's that document we're looking at. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Sherri.
It's okay. The applicant has requested that funeral homes be allowed to C1 as a... Originally to have them allowed a C1. In my research, it appears that a lot of organizations, a lot of localities had it as permitted by appeal or by right. And it's revolving around a particular location he has found that happens to be zoned C1. His request originally was... I'm sorry, I'm kind of off track here. Originally came in for a C2 rezoning and we decided that that wasn't the best option for him because then that leaves that parcel as C2 in the event that it's no longer a funeral home, it can be a gamut of different uses. So I made the suggestion that we would go with a rewrite to the zoning ordinance. And the best option that I thought in my research would be for the permitted by appeal. That allows it as... That gives it a blanket of protection that it would actually go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment for special exception use. And when a case like that does go, and we've kind of touched on this before, to the BZA, it has to go through several criteria to meet as far as services and have the parking availability and compatible uses, that sort of thing, before it can be approved by staff. So this was presented to the planning commission. At the same time, they heard... They were okay with the recommendation and they also submitted... Forwarded that one to the city council for approval.
Let's see if I understand correctly. We're talking about C1 commercial district. That C1 district is... What's the name of that district?
It is... It's Neighborhood Commercial.
Neighborhood Commercial.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have a zoning map in here, but where's the example of that on the ground?
The main... There are really two locations over where the hospital is. There's a small area, what's in there, nursing homes, some doctor's offices. And the other portion is over east towards Riverside Drive where the Dr. Bush's office is and the tavern, those uses there. Just two small pockets.
The house named the tavern.
Yes.
So if someone has a property there or they're going to lease a property there, then the owner then would be required to come to the city planner and request an exception to put in a funeral home in one of those locations.
Correct.
And that would then have to go through the appeal process with the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Correct.
And the planning commission has reviewed this and recommended that this be authorized.
Yes.
That's...
Let me get the correct location where we're talking about. On River Street, on River Street in front of the water board, that corner property.
Correct.
That's where you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Now, what if you have objections from citizens? How many days would you have?
It'd go through the typical appeal process.
It goes through the appeal process.
So someone would have to come in. The timing is they'd have to come in early enough so it could get put on the next agenda, which usually requires 15 days, 10 days, two weeks?
Well, there's a 21-day deadline.
21 days. So you got... They'd have to come in. There'd be 21 days before it could go on the Board of Zoning Adjustment agenda. And that'd have to be announced in the newspaper, you know, on the agenda at that time, notice to be sent out. Do you put up signs on the property?
Signs are posted.
So there's signs that goes up on the property also?
Neighborhood adjacent properties are notified by...
Now, all the signs that say is there's a request for zoning appeal.
Yeah, you wouldn't name the business.
It wouldn't necessarily name the business, I don't think, does it?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Phone number for people to call.
Yeah. And then, and there... That would also have the date and time of the Board of Zoning Adjustment meeting. So the neighbors would have that plus what's in the newspaper. And at that point, once it goes before the Board of Zoning Adjustment, you'd have staff recommendations, correct?
Yes.
And then the board... Members of the Board of Zoning Adjustment, they'd have to have a quorum to be able to approve it on appeal. And likewise, if the person... If they didn't approve it, their alternative then is to appeal it to the circuit court. Is that correct?
With the same process, yes.
Same process. Mr. Cobb?
The day resigning, you had some old film home rejected. I already started complaining about the school. You had a lot of... Get a lot of smacks.
That's a lot of traffic right there.
I'm not saying, you know, I think he was down there that day, the film home, Southern Film Home. And you, you know...
He had expressed some concerns. And the whole idea though is it's not, again, it is not my... It's not staff's responsibility... Well, not responsibility is a bad word, but it would be... It would rest with the Board of Zoning Adjustment to determine ultimately if that was...
Yeah, let me go... And let me expand on this a little bit. Funeral homes are now allowed in any commercial zone except C1. Is that correct?
Just C2 and C...
C3.
Mm-hmm.
So, whoa, stop.
Except C1, C2, and C3.
No.
Is that what you're saying?
It's allowed in C2 and C3.
Okay, okay. We're gathered then, okay.
Yeah. It's not allowed in C1 at this time, just to be clear on everything. And C4, don't we have a C4 too? So C4 is our main commercial, you like along 431, which includes where we have four homes.
Highway commercial.
Yeah. And ends, is it C2? Is that the downtown? What's the...
That's a C3 is the downtown.
C3 is the downtown. It's kind of the historic... I guess we call it the downtown business.
Central business, I guess what it's called.
You know, this is the same neighborhood was opposed to the alcohol. And you got the same, you know, you remember when Gilan Thomas?
That was a street over, right?
Yeah, what I'm saying, you know.
Closed to the...
Sure. And I think that's... I mean, that's why instead of... One of the discussions that you... And one of the things the staff reviewed here is that it would have to be approved on appeal as opposed to being allowed just by outright.
Yeah.
So what there's... What we're saying is, let's say someone wanted to put a funeral home down toward the Bluff area, which is... Has some C1. C1, C2 divided down there. Then if they wanted to go on the C1 side, they'd have to get... They'd have to get approval.
Yes.
If they were on the C2 side, it's just a matter of following the right building process. I'll give you an example. I think on the Bluff, the old jail and that other commercial building right next to that two-story building, it's almost divided where that building is. So if someone got on one end of the building, they might be able to do it. If they got it the other end, they would have to get an appeal. So that's basically the rationale. Is that correct?
And, you know, just to kind of highlight, I mean, the uses that are permitted in C1 already are like barber shops, beauty shops, banks, cafes, drugstores, freak markets, dry cleaning, laundry pickup, flower shops, convenience stores. And so there is some business activities, obviously, in a C1 neighborhood commercial. And then the uses that are permitted on appeal now are like gas station, fill-in stations what it's called. You know, the old... Our old terminology that we use for a gas station.
Convenience stores, yeah.
A fill-in station. You know, I hadn't heard that called in a long time. But it doesn't include like outdoor repair. So it would just add that so that they can consider it. It wouldn't mean that they would grant it because they would take into consideration such things like traffic and whether or not it's appropriate location for obvious reasons. And they would take into consideration all of those things. But they could consider... It could be considered by the BZA on appeal. And they would have to go through the application process and prove that the location is suitable and that it won't affect traffic and that it would be appropriate because of the location you could bring into consideration, location close to a school, whether or not that's an appropriate use in that distance with school, that kind of thing. So it would just basically mean that they could consider it on appeal and then they would have to go through those same processes as any other business goes through on appeal. So it wouldn't mean that it's granted.
Was there a special... Excuse me. Mr.... Excuse me. I saw his lips moving, I'm sorry. Let me go to him.
Well, it almost looks like we're trying to pass the buck on this without making a decision.
What do you mean?
I mean, why not? It should be a no realistically.
Should be a no... A note? What'd you say?
A no.
Okay.
Because, I mean, my personal opinion, if it's where it's located, it wouldn't get approved. And I mean, there's a ton of traffic there, there's no parking there.
Oh, wait, wait. Now, you see, what's... Here's the... Here's the... What we have to separate between the two is that we're not making a decision on a specific location.
I understand, I understand that. But I mean, it sounds like we're almost passing the buck to the BZA.
We do that with a lot of things. And I... And in a lot of areas, you know, that's what they do. They study the... They study it, they deal with the public, and we've appointed them. It's like Parks and Rec deals with certain things. I mean, yeah, if we do this, we are passing it to them. But we're also giving them the latitude to do... Make decisions with this, not only for that particular location that you brought up, but for all the other C1 area. Am I correct? Mr. Knight?
I was about to say, the bottom line is that after the discussions and all, the bottom line come back to the council, don't it?
It would be appealed. You know, it'd actually... Yeah, the approval of the ordinance is going to come to the council.
Come to the council.
The process to go through it will be through the planning, the city planner, border zoning adjustments, and the circuit court. So you have all three of those for people to dispute it. To the city planner's point, we have vacant buildings and if there's opportunities for businesses to go in some of those vacant buildings, we'd like to see that happen for tax revenue and for the good of the city. But at the same time, we'd like to make sure it's not done where it harms the neighborhood and the surrounding area. Is that a... Am I stating that?
Yes.
So I think that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to see, okay, this might be an option. This particular situation that she mentioned, you might be right. May be pretty clearly a no. Then, but that's the... We'd let those folks who do this on a monthly basis review that and then also allow them to deal with the public and deal with staff and making that decision. The... When that usually goes up, the mayor, police chief or the police department, fire chief The, when that usually goes up, the mayor, uh, police chief or the police department, fire chief, fire department, uh, street department, all the folks look at the traffic flow and they, all the staff has input off of that, so that's part of what would. And, and the schools would be able to, you know, they'd be given a notice, so they'd have that, that input. And that just, you're right, we, we pass that off to them. So, uh, we don't have to, I mean, you know, I think the idea here is, is that, is it, when we look at this and it's, uh, the board, the planning commission has recommended this ordinance to us, and I guess is it coming to us on another unanimous, uh, vote? So, they've looked at it, they think we ought to review it, we can vote it up or vote it down, I just want to make sure everyone was comfortable with it and, and you kind of see the pros and cons there off of it, we don't, we're not trying to make that specific decision. Any other questions or comments on that particular ordinance? Everyone get it, have enough to take it before the council, we'll have to have public hearing on it also.
I mean, the only thing I would add is that if the council as a whole feels like there are no circumstances that you would allow a funeral home in that particular C1 neighborhood commercial zone, then you would vote no on it.
Bottom line.
Right, the bottom line, if there are not any circumstances that you would ever want a funeral home to be allowed, even under the right, under appeal, then you would vote no, uh, under that, you wouldn't want the, um, ordinance changed.
Any other questions on that item? So, we'll, uh, we'll, we're going to look at the, the first ordinance and get, you're going to give us feedback on the one as far as adding to the mayor for the buffer zone. This one will have come to us in this particular format then, let's say, let's say here something or something comes up in between now and, and the public hearing. Any other items for zoning? Why don't you just stay though, Sherri, if you would, because we, are you, you ready to talk about the entertainment district? Jason, Jason's done a lot, I want to compliment him on, uh, he and a number of, uh, community members have been involved with this entertainment district ordinance. They've gotten the copies from others, just for the, remind the council, uh, we sent off a request to the attorney general's office to review the state law to make sure that, uh, the state law, that, that's the, the main authorizing authority applies to the city so that we can, we can use this law and we, we got, you want to go ahead and tell us that report we got back from the?
What, what, we got an opinion back from the attorney general's office that, um, we're, as you know, a Class 7 municipality and the only way that a Class 7 municipality can have, um, an entertainment district is if it met the criteria of either having a arts council or a Main Street program. And Main Street program was not defined in the, um, act. So, we asked the attorney general to find whether or not our Main Street program qualified. And it's, uh, the attorney general opinion came back and said, yes, that our Main Street program did qualify. And so, assuming that we met the other criteria of having an, establishing an entertainment district, then we could consider one. And the other criteria being that you have four licensees within that area, um, and that, and those particular criteria. So now, the council can consider it, um, under the act.
And, and just a couple of other points to, to remind everybody. We actually had public hearings on the concept of doing the entertainment district. We didn't have the, the, the exact ordinance here and the exact area outlined. But you may recall in December when we were having our other, uh, public hearings, uh, we included the entertainment district concept in two separate public hearings. And I know at least one of them, we had, uh, over an hour, maybe an hour and a half of comments and concerns. And, uh, from what I've seen and, and sitting in at least one or two meetings, uh, Mr. Bennett's had that, uh, they've made a, a very genuine, good faith effort to address this in a positive fashion, so I'll turn it over to you now, Jason.
Okay, well, I'll just walk through what we have, and the items in red are actually just comments. But basically, uh, first we'll talk about the map real quick. The state allows you for a half a mile by half a mile area. But what we're looking at is actually going to be more of a main, uh, straight line with the exception of, uh, including the chamber area and part of the, uh, walking trail up to the gazebo or the, uh, excuse me, the, uh, greenhouse. And also the block from Randolph back to the end of, where the, uh, old hotel is. And it'll include the, uh, back to where basically Barb's is right there. So, it's from Barb's up to the, uh, Yvonne Gym, I think is the name of it now. It's the old Rainbow Farm Center. And both sides of the highway there, both sides of the road.
Jason, excuse me a minute, excuse me a minute. To the left of this map, to the left, is that Barb's up there? I'm trying to get your location.
Yeah, Barb's and the, right to the Piggly Wiggly Park.
Yeah, okay, we together, okay.
Basically, it allows for a one-drink minimum. And, uh, the item in red, I'll, it basically says that the, uh, participating restaurants have agreed to purchase acrylic for outside use. And that, uh, Chamber will provide cups if they're leaving the restaurant, the first 500, after that, they'll be purchased. And no one would ever be walking around with two cups or a can or a bottle of alcohol.
What you're saying is that the ordinance does not authorize that, that that would be a violation of the ordinance if someone did that? And we'd be, uh, we'd be able to enforce that.
Correct.
Through our process and procedures, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Beverages outside, patron guests and members of licensed premises may exit the licensed premises with one alcoholic beverage and consume within the certain restrictions such as alcohol beverages where, within the confines of the arts entertainment district, but not re-enter or enter another place. Basically, they can't, they can leave, but they can't go to another, uh, restaurant and carry their stuff in. Basically, it's, uh, it's limiting what, what it can be done.
So, a person can get a cup? I'm just saying Barb's, now it might not be that, I'm saying Barb's. Now, how far down this road?
They can go all the way in the green area.
All the way in the green area, so that's down to, almost to the post office?
Correct.
With one cup?
With one cup.
Will we have the, just a hypothetical question now, will we have the police to monitor this? And how will they monitor whether or not they stop from Barb's down in front of Walter Carlton's office and refill?
Uh, well, if they break a can out, they have broken the law. And we have talked to the police department, they have, they have agreed to put boots on the ground.
Say what you just said again.
The police department has agreed to put boots on the ground.
No, no, about the can.
That there is no cans down there. You cannot dispense yourself, that is a violation.
In other words, you can, you can go and, and get an alcoholic beverage, you can, let's say you're finishing up eating at Barb's, you use that for example. I don't think they have a liquor line.
I'll just use.
But let's, or let's, let's do Cajun Corner, they do.
Okay.
So, they, they're sitting out there on the sidewalk now, which this is, will allow them to sit out under the, under the canopy there. And they can have a meal, and they can have their drink, and they finish their meal, and they could take their, their drink, either a full, either whatever in that cup or what's left, and they could walk down the street. But they couldn't refill it out of their car or anywhere else, they'd have to have that. And you may be getting ready to cover this, as I understand it, that cup from, from that particular restaurant would be distinctive for that restaurant, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, you know, someone can't say, well, I'm just getting it over here, I'm just getting over there. So, there's, there's going to be a very distinct way to identify.
Who cup that is.
Whose cup it is, and, and, and so, if they get down and they want to get another drink, they got to throw that one away. And either they got to go back to the one restaurant or they got to stop at another one to get a different drink off of that. But the idea is to allow someone to eat in that zone, I'll let you continue there, Jason.
And, and you're right, and basically piggyback on that, all the laws that exist now will be applicable with the exception of the one drink on the street. Basically, there's no Sunday sales, uh, there's no sales to minors. It's strictly for basically having a atmosphere that allows for, uh, eating and dining outside.
Public drunkenness or disorderly still against the law?
Yeah, still going to be enforced and enforced heavily. That's what I had, and then as I said, it tends to have a welcoming scene that maintains our small-town charm. I mean, we're, we're, what we're trying to do is attract tourism and not make it Mardi Gras, we want to make it more like Disney World.
But one of the things that has been a request of the businesses, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Jason, is that where they, where they can sit out, they, they come outside of the restaurant now, and I think they've had food out there before, but they, they've not been able to have an alcoholic beverage, is that correct? This would allow that to happen, is?
And this law was actually put in place in 2011 for allow, to allow that.
And the other communities that are doing this, just run through some of the?
Well, between us, Dothan just enacted it, and Phoenix City has had it for a year.
And they ha, they have it in Montgomery, of course, the bigger cities have had it for a good while.
Gunnersville is one that has recently put it in.
I visited Oka, uh, Oka Laka, and, uh, they actually, they actually, uh, cordoned off a couple of parking places in front of those restaurants and made nice outdoor dining facilities. With, uh, with umbrellas and had them marked off, you know, where you wouldn't step out in the traffic, you know. Of course, it's supposed to be low speed through there anyhow, but.
Now, is that done on a permanent basis or is that done on a special event?
That was, uh, that, that I witnessed was, looked like permanent, looked like permanent. But, but it, you know, we could start off maybe with some, uh, some, uh, just preliminary, try it, try it and see if, see if it works and see how it's perceived.
You remember we had a problem when we started putting tables out, when we started putting them, about?
For traffic flow?
Fifteen years ago, you remember they wanted to do that and we had that problem when we started putting tables out in front of business?
You're talking about on the actual sidewalk?
Correct. On sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah, uh, Cajun Corner is actually, they actually kind of suited for it. But the other, the other ones would actually need a little more space because it's not, it's kind of tied in there, so to give them a, you know. I think if you, if you did a couple of parking places, I mean, that would.
We, and that, that came up also with the cars being parked up at, at the car sales place.
I was just about to mention that.
And, and if we go back, I think, uh, and Sherri, you probably don't know this off the top of your head, but I believe we had it somewhere that they had to have at least three or four foot trafficking, where you could trap, pedestrian traffic could go by. So, I think that's still, if you look at that in most of those cases, that's workable.
Bob, I believe that might be a problem, I would certainly hope not, but the place you're talking about, what's the name of that place? Right across from Barb's, where they sell cars, uh?
Tim Dollar.
Tim Dollar, you know, where the cars are parked.
Yeah, that's where, that's where it started, yeah. And they, they try to adjust and seek and walk through there, I know that, that's, that was one of the, that was a more difficult one to address at the time. Jason, tell us a little bit how you envision, just because the Chamber and the Tourism Committee have been involved with this and the downtown businesses, so. How do you envision this being implemented and promoted, uh, to meet that objective for attracting tourists and, you know, family environment and so forth? What do you, what do you see taking place?
In the future, it's, uh, we got, well, for example, we do, uh, Industry Appreciation Night right there at the Chamber. That can be used in this, whereas currently, I think it's being done, but not necessarily the right way. This will allow it to be done the right way.
That's a special event?
Yes.
Actually.
And, uh, and then across the way, you got the, uh, uh, there's been some mention of building a stage over there, you can actually.
I already have a stage there.
And you can have a.
Yeah, a little lawn type concerts.
Exactly.
Summertime.
And that's some of the stuff, and, uh.
They're talking about different activities at the gazebo, I believe, whether it be music and or art or some of the displays that would be tied in and in collaboration with, uh, with the Chamber and maybe other downtown businesses, is that correct?
Correct, and what we, what we're hoping is, we see all these people coming from Atlanta going to the beach, they look over at the Cajun Corner and they see people sitting out having a good time, pull in. And every time they pull in, that's a dollar for us.
She gets a lot of business from that, you know, that traffic already, so that would enhance it.
Would you mention, uh, paragraph eight in there talks about, uh, insurance and just, just that there are requirements?
Yeah, uh, basically, if in the future there is a, uh, concert or something like that, we have, uh, the city Yvonne, uh, listed as liability coverage by the event coordinator. These are the, uh, basically, and I'm pulling up Sam Walton, actually, I borrowed this from, uh, Dothan's.
Ordinance?
Ordinance they have posted on the web.
And then the last item there is the hours?
Hours in effect, uh, basically, we're looking at from 11:00 AM Monday to 11:00 AM Saturday. Does not include Sunday.
Eleven AM to midnight, Monday through Saturday, is that correct?
Correct, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't run continuously.
Right.
So, basically, those are the?
Actually, we said 11 to 11.
Eleven to 11, I think it shows midnight on this track.
Yeah, I'm a man.
So, I, I mean, that works, 11 works, however, I think we just need to be clear on that time. And the, the point, uh, uh, city attorney brought up, Courtney, would you just mention about the, uh, why these things are defined? Not only the area, but also the specifics?
Well, because what, um, when you're talking about for the police department, the police department's going to have to have a defined area so that they know where they can stop somebody if you were to take an open container outside this area. And so, there has to be a clear mark of where you can go and where you can't go. Because if somebody were to necessarily be walking down the sidewalk from the Cajun Corner and they go down to Rite Aid with that open container, then they're in violation, okay? Um, and so, that's why there has to be a clear mark of where the entertainment district starts and where it stops. And so, um, you would want to have an area that's well-lit, that has sidewalks, that is safe to walk around. And so, you don't want to have it to go into an area where there's not sidewalks, where there's not, um, it's not well-lit or that you're going through neighborhoods, um, or through a residential area in order to continue along into the entertainment district. But it has to be clearly marked so that the police department as well as.
Citizens.
The citizens will know when they're walking out of the entertainment district so they won't unknowingly violate the law. So, that's why you would want to, first of all, you have to have four licensees within that district. So, you have to include the Cajun Corner, El Zalisco, and River City, and Legends, if those are the four that you want. And then it's got to be in an area where it'll be clear to the officers when they leave that area, um, as well as to the patron so that they'll know that this is a place that they can't go. So, they, like, for instance, couldn't walk down to Rite Aid, um, with this, they would have to continue down in what is the entertainment district.
Do the, uh, do the establishments that are going to, that have the alcohol license, um, do they have to get a special permit for this? Or just as long as they're in the area, they're, they're authorized?
They have to call and make designation, that's all they have to do.
And they have to provide the containers after that first 500 free ones at the Chamber, so they would do, correct?
Right.
Still have the, the other laws about driving and open containers in cars, so we're not negating anything along those lines, correct?
Correct, correct. The only thing, the only thing in addition that would be allowed is basically, if you had it within the container, then you could walk, um, with an alcoholic beverage from the Cajun Corner down through the entertainment district, or you could be outside. Where right now, you would be in violation if you were to take a beer or a glass of wine outside of either the Cajun Corner, River City Grill, Legends, any of those at this point, if you were to walk outside with those, then you would be in violation of the open container. And so, by establishing entertainment district, then you would allow that. But to me, um, one thing you saw in Dothan and Auburn and other, they have a lot of special events that they do in conjunction with this to make it classy.
Yes.
Have live music, do things, um, where it's not, like you said, Mardi Gras.
Well, and anyone who's, you know, if you've been to Mardi Gras and Mobile, that's pretty upscale, they're not quite as, uh, they have a host of special events off of that, they're not quite as New Orleans.
Terry's our expert on, I think.
Any other comments or questions?
It'd be nice if we had a policeman, at least two extra policemen, walking the, walking the beat on both sides. They're in special events, I think it would be, you know, have the bicycle. They're in special events, I think it would be, you know, have the bicycle. Bicycle on walking, yeah.
I think when it's not a special event, what we, what we're more likely to see is people sitting out, eating at the, at the establishments, if they want to eat outside, because there are times when that's nice. And then, when there are, when there is a special event, that'll be the time we'll, we'll see this happen. And the point would be, one, we have to approve it first, and then, two, we have to make sure we implement it in a good fashion. Uh, otherwise, we'll have to change what we're doing. We still have to have a public hearing on this, because we didn't have the final ordinance at the time, so. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Churches, location of churches.
There is one in this district, it's, uh, storefront on Randolph.
Okay, I'm trying to look at this, this big square you got.
Yeah, it would be.
Here.
Yeah.
It's not a church in that area, I think it's back this way, John.
It's right on Randolph is where it is.
There's one right here.
Other, other was one, other was one there?
Yes.
You lost, yeah.
But, I tried to make it to where it would, uh, I understand the concerns, and I tried to draw it to where it was the least impactful as possible.
And, and what we have off of that is, is we know that, uh, we have, we have churches that are going into what used to be commercial buildings.
That's right.
So, that's, that, that makes it a, a challenge in terms of what used to be the old established brick and mortar off of there. Any other questions or comments, that's a good question, Johnny. If none, Jason, you remember that we start, you, you recommend we start moving forward and have a, have a public hearing and everything set up for this? All right, we'll be working on that for a schedule, so we can announce that to the public. Is there any other, uh, items to come before, for us that we need to discuss in the, good of the council?
Looking to adjourn?
Is there a second? Second, it's Friday afternoon, someone want a second, will we adjourn? Anybody? Johnny?
I want, I want us to stay.
Johnny, he likes our cooking. All his favor, we stand adjourned, thank you.